Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Gosham Central School District. Being held Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. At the District Administrative Building and being live stream twenty-two. I'd like to start the meeting with the Flec of Legions.
Flec meeting is the student flag of the United States of America. The founding of the Flec of Saints, one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
Moving on, are you motion for the intended candidate? That's John Shannon. That's a good idea. So we're gonna hold on. So everybody knows who the tenure candidate is. We'll do a brief introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. So before I turn it over to Mr. Carter, I just wanna make a comment about tenure. Sometimes we have employees who are hired or voted at different times in the year, and our tenure appointments are a little bit off schedule. This is one of those cases, and not for anything negative, but the district, when it comes to tenure, takes this process very seriously. We know this is an investment in human capital in the district that is meant to serve our students with the utmost respect and dignity possible. And before I turn it over to Mr. Carter, this is an employee that I happen to know very personally as I hired her. I was a high school principal and teacher aide, and you're gonna hear some very glowing recommendations, and I confirm that everyone is true and then some. So without further ado, Mr. Carter, I'll turn it over to you for presentation of the tenure candidate.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Good evening, everyone. So Ms. Serrano Ayu has been with the district since two thousand eleven, and we've had the opportunity to work closely with her at Gosham High School. She has bounced between a few appointments, but no matter where we place her, she's extremely successful. Great colleague, a wonderful person, and certainly a valued member of our team. Without going any further, stealing some thunder from Mr. Panteleon. I would like to say congratulations on your upcoming tenure appointment, and we're very happy for you. Very happy to have you here. Mr. Panteleon, if you will join us here.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Carter.
Good evening, everyone. So it is my pleasure to speak in support of Ms. Ana Serrano Ayu. And her role as teacher assistant has positively impacted our learning community. But, you know, in terms of the individuals that work with her most, the students, I'm gonna give you some quotes from their experiences with Ms. Ayu. One of Ms. Ayu's current students, Alexa, started off, let me tell you something about Mrs. Serrano. She is a wonderful teacher in person, going from her good morning amores to her I bendito and the good energy that she shares with everyone. But for me, it's that buenos dias por la mañana that always brings a smile to my face, and that amores, meaning love, is never left out. From her loving to funny side, Ms. Serrano always shares little of herself with everyone. She's always dancing from place to place, I can attest to that, and making everyone laugh. If you need help, she's always there. I remember the first time she helped me, I was printing my English work, and I didn't know how to use a printer. So she showed me how to use the printer and has never stopped from there. Helping and caring for our E N L students as if we were our own kids. Something I always see her doing is looking out for her coworkers. She always checks in and asks her colleagues, how are you? How do you feel today? Or do you need something? Ms. Serrano was so important to us. And a former student, a recent graduate, Diego, commented, it took a little time to say a few words in English. That time is nothing compared to the time that Ms. Serrano gave me in all the classes and taught me how to care for one another. Without your help in classes, without you, I would not have been able to be successful. That is why I'm very grateful to you and the person you are. Thank you, and may God bless you. And Swarland, a former student and graduate, stated, Ms. Serrano was always there and will be the one of the best teachers that I've ever had. I thank her because she helped me in a lot with my schoolwork. It was difficult for me to learn a language in this country until she helped me in such a personal way. She showed me respect, and I learned how to respect others by her example. So is that with, uh, without reservation that I recommend Ms. Ana Serrano Ayu to you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, Mr. Panteleon. I think it speaks for itself that I offer to the board my uninhibited recommendation for Ana Serrano Ayu for tenure.
All right, take two here. Need a motion to appoint the tenure candidate. Now that you know who it is. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of Ana Serrano Ayu in the tenure area of teaching assistant, effective October first, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor? Congratulations. I'm going to take just a brief five-minute break here to offer some congratulations and enjoy some refreshments. We'll get back to the business portion of the meeting momentarily. Goodbye.
To God, he's been sleeping. He's like, please, our hands. No, I am. When I'm close, I'm so.
Thank you very much. Welcome back. Moving on to the next point, privilege of the floor. I'd like to just find every one person wishing to speak. First, be recognized by the president and identify themselves. Any group of organizations wishing to address the board must be identified, must identify as having a spokesperson. Comments shall be brief and concise, generally not exceeding two minutes only per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the board president. Speaker may comment on matters related to district business calls. The board will not permit in public session discussion involving The board will not permit in public session discussions involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Now that we have that out of the way, we have one person signed up, Heather Savada, for her script.
Yeah. So I have two children in the district, and I'm here to talk about the new SAS drop-off and pickup. I emailed with Dr. Coats about it. I've spoken with Ms. Frisco about it. I know there's a bunch of other parents. I've done, um, I'm not gonna talk about the other parents. I'm just gonna start with myself and my situation. But I did do a Google survey, and I got about seventy-two respondents about their feelings, which I emailed over to Dr. Coats and uh, and Triscle about, you know, community feelings about the safety of it. But I'm here to say it's bananas. It's terrible. Personally, speaking about myself, I'm not comfortable putting my children on the bus. You know, driving my children, I hear the chaos on the bus, morning, afternoon. I hear the drivers screaming and yelling at the children. If you just walk by those buses, you can hear it, like, they do not have control over their children. I've heard them be angry, use language I'm not comfortable with. I've heard stories, many of parents, their kids being hit on the bus, bullied on the bus. Just a few weeks ago, an asthma attack on the bus with somebody being kicked. It's like not a place for my family. We decided a long time ago. We're privileged, and we're lucky enough that me and my husband both work from home most days, so we can drop and pick up our family. So far this year, when this came out, that you were not really allowed to drive your child to the school, to Scotch Town. You had to park or go into a line at the bus garage or the bus, the high school, sorry. Then put your child on a shuttle bus. That child would then be shuttled to Scotch Town, right? For reference, um, I have a thirty-eight-pound kindergartner who is still in a five-point harness, like a, a safety seat, who has never just got on a bus without me or my husband and shuttled, shuttled to a school, right? And she was in the U P K program last year, and she's still, you know, is very uncomfortable. So this year, I've been parking near the tennis courts and walking my child to SAS in the morning. This has been an eye-opening experience. You know, before I go into that, it has me double downing on not going on the bus. Just last week, I, I emailed over pictures to Ms. Triscle. I saw a bus driver with a small child showing them things on their phone. Weird. Then I saw, um, children in the stairwell of the buses doing gymnastics, holding onto the side, like kicking the door. Then I heard another driver, this is while I'm walking my daughter to the door at SAS, telling the little animals to wait for the bell. I mean, the bus drivers, they just seem super stressed. They're, you know, overworked, underpaid. They probably don't have the right social emotional support for supporting these kids on the buses. Now, uh, the issue of dropping off at SAS, I know there's many parents like me who are still either parking, walking their kids, not putting on the shuttle bus. I mean, that lower parking lot has gotten extremely dangerous now at SAS. Walking from the tennis courts, I will say, crossing with my daughter, we cross in that, uh, the cross guard is down by, like, further down by G I S. We cross by, almost by the, up by the tennis courts. Sorry, I'm trying to paint a picture. It's terrible. Closer. I mean, the cars are not going twenty. They are going forty both ways. I mean, they don't even slow down. So that's a super dangerous situation, and there's many parents doing it. If you look in that cul-de-sac or by the tennis courts, there's probably, I took a picture of the day, there's twelve cars there who are all doing the same thing as I'm doing, right? Or you see the people going into the lower parking lot. So, um, the other issue with it is SAS, if you do not want to put your child on the shuttle bus, you have to pick them up at two forty-five, right? So every day, our teacher, Ms. Doyle, who's amazing, there's three kids so far that I know of in our class, get pulled out of kindergarten, get walked down to the front office, signed out. That foyer at SAS is bananas at two forty-five. There are so many parents, I mean, you could probably pull the list of who's signing their kids out. It's a long list. Yeah, so when you start adding up the minutes of class time she's missing, minutes weekly, minutes over the month, minutes over the year. She's missing, my kindergarten is gonna miss a lot of school due to this plan. Yeah, and it sounds lasting, I promise. It also feels like each day with the people who are not putting their kids on their shuttle bus, there's a different plan. Every morning, I've been walking my daughter to the front of the school, again, tiny kindergartner, um, to the front of the school. This morning, I was told I had to wait by the top of the stairs, top of the stairs, uh, by the lower parking lot. She left my arms sobbing, 'cause she has, she wanted me to walk her, like, she wanted me to wave and say goodbye. She can't see me through the buses. So, so that prompted me to come tonight. Uh, if you ever see that, I will cry. So I'm just looking forward, uh, to coming up with a better solution, you know, a more emotionally supportive, safer for our children, thought-out drop-off experience for our youngest children. That's all.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us and also committing all that to Dr. Coats.
Yep. Do you wanna, or? Henry, I don't know how to.
Um, moving on to our next point. The President of the Board. Tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about our, um, Governance Handbook. So this is gonna be a little bit more of a conversation, a little bit less of a report. So over the past few months, we started working on a Governance Team Handbook. We received some feedback from the folks who did some governance training for us and really wanted to get something put together in this year. And the function of the Governance Handbook is, I'm just gonna read a couple of points regarding what's on the table of contents to let you know the type of information that's in there. It defines the roles and responsibilities of the protocol for the Board of Education, the role of the Board, the role of the individual Board member, the role of the President and Vice President. Board meetings, how the public meetings are organized, meeting dynamics, public participation in meetings, communications and information sharing, internal protocol, government, Governance Team protocol, Communication Superintendent, policies and regulations, purpose, the role of the superintendent. And, you know, I think collectively, we all think this, thought this would be a really good resource. I know that personally speaking, coming onto the board, there were a lot of questions about the how, the what, the why, the who's responsible, who makes what decision. And our intention is to adopt this in the near future and then have it available online for the public to be able to see what entails, you know, each of these roles and responsibilities and protocols. So that's our intention of putting this together. Tonight, I'd like to open the discussion to any other board members regarding the feedback or any insight that we might have initially. And then just discuss briefly a timeline for ourselves for adoption. So I'll just open it up to anybody that would like to contribute some comments.
I'd just like to thank Maureen for putting together. I know you, you did a lot of work on this, put this together, of course, and it's a great start for something that we didn't have. I think it's something that we should finally adopt and go forward. Don't understand it's a living document, so it could be changed if we need, needed to change, but absolutely.
I think that this is really important, and I see it was really important to finalize this and get it out on, on the, on the, um, website so that, um, the public can, can be aware as well. So I absolutely support it and, and look forward to having it finalized.
I agree. Yes, definitely. Thank you, Maureen, for all the work you've done here. And one of the things that I definitely like about it is the, um, suggestion of the new Order of Member Orientation that's listed in the handbook. I think that is, that is great, especially since, um, all of us have come in just over the last twenty years, and you never really know what to expect until you come on the board event. So I, I think this is a great resource and it'll be, uh, run free and be able to, um, share with the public.
Just to kind of echo the sentiment there, I think this should be distributed with the petition. When somebody wishes to run for school board, it would be very helpful to know what you're getting into. So I, I definitely support adopting that.
A, a couple of items that, that jumped out at me that I think we should put a little input on, not necessarily tonight, but as we get the ball rolling over the next few sessions. There was the big A agenda items, as it was referred to, that's right at the beginning of our manual. So that's something that lays out a little bit of the timeline and board goals throughout the year over the course of X number of months. I like the idea of reviewing this annually, revisiting it, having a refresher, the even opening conversation. So that was something I thought that we could spend a few minutes on. Again, not tonight, but we, we can have there. There was one other point that jumped out at me. I thought that, uh, Ken and Susan made a nice recommendation about having some graphics. I just printed this as one of the ones that they noted. Might be helpful in the handbook. So I think if there's any other graphics that you find and you think would be important, I think those are great to share. And there were a few other things that jumped out at me, um, for consideration to look at. Two other examples they gave of other governance handbooks, I found that most of the information was really reflected in what we have. In one of the examples, there were some key statutes governing the B O E, and I thought that that was a really nice reference, Scott. Couple of highlights, uh, you know, the open meeting law, just quoting where you could find that. Freezing the information law, just, it was a single pager, so I thought this was interesting. I flagged it. You know, something to take a bet if you wanna add it in there. And the only other item that jumped out at me to take a look at as well is they had another format on the doubling example. And I thought just the way that the chart was laid out was very easy to read. It almost reminded me of some of the code of conduct stuff, like infraction chart. It just read pretty nicely. So if you take a look at that as well, that might be something we might wanna consider.
Is that something electronically?
Yeah.
Would you go and distribute it?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Any other opening thoughts or comments regarding the handbook?
Any other question? Is there a plan to have some variation of that training every year?
Personal opinion?
Yeah.
I found it to be very helpful just starting out the year, and maybe it's a little bit of a different training. This was unique with
Yeah.
the level of experience our board has. I thought it was really helpful, and, you know, it might be something that may, it's maybe.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have them come every year, especially if we were to have, you know, s- our senior people lead in a single lecture. I, I worry about, you know, us not seeing the people explaining the handbook as well as they did, so, uh, definitely, uh, definitely vote for having them.
And I found it to be very worthwhile having, you know, our team here as well, you know, it's a collective effort.
So just to get it off of what John was saying. So just to get along with what John was saying, I know that there's been conversations just in the past, um informal conversations. Possibly looking at workshop on. We haven't, um, I don't believe anyone has had the chance to witness one. But I think that that might be something that we might wanna put on. Put on the radar for sometime this year, just to get out, see how another board works uh works in that model. That might also lead to maybe it's maybe we even have a hybrid of that model where, kind of like John said. We we have workshop, we have a regular board event meeting, then maybe we have two board events. I'm not sure if that's even possible, but that might be something that we could. We at least get out and see what other options are out there. Um, I think that would be good. And I think that would kind of add to that transparency book that um we were talking about.
Yeah, I I think that's a great idea. The hybrid suggestion is a good one. You know, looking at the clock here and there, considering what else we have on the agenda and. Almost like a small workshop at the beginning, if this is something we worked through, that that might work well depending on how everything else is lining up. But. Yeah, I think in nine minutes, moving forward, I I like that suggestion.
Yeah.
Great. Um, all right, there's no other kind of initial comments. I'll make sure to get the email out to you. In terms of a timeline, how would everybody feel making this a goal maybe by end of October? We try to get our first draft ready, adopt it.
Sounds good.
I think that's doable.
All right, great. So you know, depending on our new business of the next meeting, if there's a little bit more time, we want to share some more specific items, we could bring those up. And then from there, we go going to adoption. All right, great. Sounds like a good timeline. Thank you. The the one other point I had, which was more of a conversation point, was we floated around the idea of maybe a board library. Susan and Kent did give, I think, three books that they recommended on governance and leadership. And just wanted to hear your thoughts about maybe we get a copy of those books, we keep them here, you know, in Maureen's office, a printed copy of the handbook. The educational law handbook, you know, and we have something you could check out and and read on. Thoughts and ideas on that?
Sounds good.
Sure.
Can't see a negative to it.
All right.
Very good.
And do you like maybe we'll start with that list of resources, the three that that they gave us?
Did I buy one of them? Happy to donate a few.
Great. I did too. All right, great. I'm I'm glad everybody likes that idea. I think that'll be helpful. More more stuff for the office. Great. Excellent. Very good. Uh, moving on to the agenda. Legislative update, Mr. Johnson.
There was a meeting uh last month that I was unable to attend due to us having our governance journey the same night. Um, I did reach out to Karen from Oxba. She sent me um kind of a high level overview. The meeting was primarily about the student teacher employee survey. Um, she did share some. Charts and graphs that I'll share with you guys after she sent it to me shortly before the meeting. Um, next meeting is October fourth, which will be independence for. Follow along after that.
Great, thank you very much. All right, moving on to board member committee reports. Maybe we'll do this time. All right, very good. Thank you. And we move right on to the superintendent for the man, Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. So I wanted to keep the board apprised of the application process for the GIS roof restoration project. This past week, we received our state application paperwork from Land Associates that is prepared to go. We do anticipate if it hasn't already, that will be going up to Albany shortly. The approximate backlog that we're hearing in terms of what is going through facilities planning is upwards of about fourteen to sixteen weeks right now. Because this is, I don't want to say only roof project, it it is important to us, but because there shouldn't be a lot of engineering or architectural review that comes here. We do anticipate somewhat of a quick turnaround once it gets to the queue, if you will. So I I think we'll be in fine time. If we choose to go forward with competitive bidding for the spring. Or we can still make use of the Amnia cooperative bid process. We uh we put it as both in the paperwork that was going to go to Albany. So we should be in a good position there for that work still to be done in the spring. Also wanted to give the board an update. So as you know, we approved the implementation of a transportation audit through. PTSI Partners in Traffic Safety. I forgot the end of the act, if you forgive me. They came and they did a high level audit of the leadership of the transportation audit earlier this year. They will be returning on September twenty-sixth to begin that process again. In doing that, they'll be looking at the efficiency of our runs, they'll be looking at the equipment that exists within the bus garage. They'll be looking at the inventory of buses that we have, they'll be looking at our transportation staffing, anything that they can examine to give us. Opportunities for greater growth within the transportation department and improvement, considering um the the struggles that they're having in terms of making sure that we're fully staffed. Anything that we can do for better customer service delivery to our families, and we welcome all of that input. Along the same lines, I I wanted to give an update on exactly where we stand in terms of staffing for this year. So as of this morning, we polled our um our driver personnel list exactly where it stands. At this time last year, we were at fifty-two drivers, which was significantly below where we were even uh post pandemic, pre pandemic. But at this year, we were at fifty-five. However, in speaking with the director this morning. That includes um our director, one of our mechanics, uh one of our subs, and two of our people are on leave. So unfortunately, we're right about where we were last year. And speaking with Ms. Wells this morning, we are still trying to accommodate for three different runs that we are. Working on making sure that we um can consolidate some of our other runs. We have reached out to uh Orange County as well. That if we have to give any back to the consortium run, that we will. Again, this is an ongoing piece. The hardest part of what we're dealing with right now. We used to have a a fairly extensive list of subs. We don't. So when people go out. We're calling the mechanics, we're calling the director, and we're scrambling to make sure that that our runs are covered. For example, last Friday, which we got hit terribly, we had five people out. So between covering runs and putting essentially anyone that could drive on the bus, it could really put us behind the ankle. Uh, but we will continue to work on that. And as PTSI finishes finishes its report and can give intermittent updates, we actually will get it out live time as fast as we can. I wanted to bring the board up to speed on uh something that has reached administration's desk. You perhaps have seen in the paper substantial equivalency. So this actually started probably about five to six years ago with then Governor Commissioner Eliot. One of the things that the Board of Regents started to look at very closely was ensuring that students that were graduating from private and or parochial schools. Had what they called an equivalent experience to those going to the public schools. There's a lot of debate back and forth on where the responsibility for doing examination of those programs would be. And lucky for the school districts, they have landed with all the local school districts. So we have three different schools that we are going to have to cooperate with. Um, York Academy, Burke High School, Alma Building, St. John's, and then there's a school on the north side of the district. Uh, pre-K through, I think, second grade this year. It's called Over the Moon. So we will be responsible for communicating with them. We will be responsible for going in to examine the program. Coming up this Thursday, the state director who is responsible for what this oversight is supposed to look like is actually going to do a webinar with. Orange Ulster BOSI superintendent. So I should have more uh information after this upcoming Thursday. Some districts around the state are engaging with some of the uh local BOSIs. That would be at a cost, and there is no additional funding coming from the state. I have no idea what those co- the co- the co- costs would be. So right now, we're just trying to learn more as fast as we can and be compliant with the requirement. Nevertheless, I just wanted to put that in front of the board. Nothing that I've read implicates that there will be board approval required. However, it it's certainly going to cost us money if, if nothing else, you know, capital. Finally, I wanted to give the board an update on our code of conduct. So we had our first district level cabinet meeting this week. I was able to meet with the principals and directors on the implementation of the new code of conduct. And as I explained to them that this would be a process or a lot, if you will, because they now have to take the district wide code of conduct and interpret that into building level practice documents. So what we agreed on uh at our cabinet meeting was that they would convene their building level teams right away. In doing so, we would have a check-in point, if you will, on December first to see what kind of progress they were making. One of the requests from the building level principals, and Mr. Carter pointed this out, we are in the process of training. For a new ELA MAT program right now. Our teachers have been here all week this week, and uh they were here last week as well. So we wanted to make sure that we were focusing on our curriculum and not overwhelming the instructional staff who are vital to be part of this process. So again, the work will be ongoing, but we uh set a tentative line in the sand, if you will, to make sure that there was a draft ready by the beginning of the second semester. That I could bring back to the board and share that progress. That's it. I have to address any questions, but otherwise, that's the end of our report for tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Questions? Good. Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, Mrs. Lorraine Van Mollman.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, tonight, I'm the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers tax exemption. I just wanted to review that law that was signed into effect back in December of twenty twenty-two. This must be adopted by the year twenty twenty-five by the boards. And if we were to adopt it this year before the end of the calendar year in December. It will take effect for our people in the school district or the taxes next year. I tried to get the numbers uh that would impact us from Kathy Witsack. She works at the county and she was away until Wednesday. So I can have that information for you at the next board meeting. And then hopefully, we can adopt that in. That meeting by the end of October, if that's true. Uh, the claim is on the property or your income taxes. You cannot do both. And again, it's for firefighters and for ambulance volunteers. Um, last year, at this, at the time that it was. Out in January, there were about fifty people in the town of Goshen that were receiving the exemption already. So. They are really trying to do it, and the intent is to attract more volunteers in this area. Is there any questions on that?
Would we have that public hearing?
We would before the adoption. We could do it in the same night, though.
Okay.
Yeah. And the financial report for tonight, uh it's going to cover the months of July and August. Uh, but first of all, I want to go over the tax collection. It's running smoothly so far, and it'll continue until November. I'll have data for you next month during the financial report on our collections for the month of September and then comparison with other years. I can show what we're collecting as a percentage. Uh, state reports have been filed and completed with the state. Our external audit, we're going to have a audit committee meeting on October third prior to the board meeting. And we'll review the external audit report with Jennifer from Newjent and Hasler. And hopefully, I'll have the corrective action plan ready for you at the same meeting, so we can do it all at the same time as I did in the past. Our audit reports are due to stated on October fifteenth of each year, so that's why we're trying to get it in on October third. Um, back to the financial reports, we have expenditures in the general fund, total of one point nine million in July and two point one in August. We also had some uh revenues that we received. We received excess cost aid, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. But this is actually for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and we will receive another small payment in September. And then we'll start to get our twenty-three, twenty-four state aid. After that, we did receive pilot payments, Lego Land, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and Amy's Kitchen, a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars. Health and welfare billing, thirty-two thousand dollars. And I'm going to re- report on the interest again because it's been such an impact on our revenue. And for the two months, we received one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in interest. Our budget status reports include expenses for the general fund in as of August worth four point one million dollars. And we received a total of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in revenue for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And you'll find in your packets, you have budget status and revenue for the other funds as well, but I tend to focus on the general fund when I give my report. Okay, and and we're gonna have solar pilots. So we did have the request to do some. Get some information for you on our solar pilots. And this spreadsheet we put together here. The top one is a summary of all of the files. And.
So by the way, Jennifer. Yeah, I got it.
After all of that, it was. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have two current agreements uh with Lenmere Lake and some of Goshen. Uh, the Next Amp is the company or the gentleman who came and did a presentation for us last month. It's so fast. And they're awaiting our approval. We also have another proposal in the pipe, and that's New Leaf. And we are working on an agreement with them. So the rates are usually based upon a pro rata share of our taxes. So our tax rate should be at seventy-seven point zero four percent. Next amp negotiated more with the county and the town, and their basis was because there would be extra work involved because it is on the landfill, their solar. Um, pilot. So that caused our rate to be reduced to fifty percent rather than the typical seventy-seven percent. So we can, that you can see on their spreadsheet, I did do what they're proposing as compared to what the typical basis would be, and that's the fourth page back. And it will result in a little over two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in revenue as a difference. From what we would typically get. See what I'm talking about. All the agreements have a two percent rate increase per year. They last for fifteen years. It's just this one has a different rate proposal. The county and the town have agreed to those rates, of course. So the next step is for us to either agree or to none. If we don't, then I don't know what it would, if it would be worth it in litigation. For that purpose. But New Leaf is proposing, just so you know, the to go to the seventy-seven percent rate, which is the typical rate. One of the things that Dan Kindred talked about today when I spoke with him is that we could choose to opt to opt out of solar pilots in the future. And what that would mean, and they would still have to pay the tax rate of the seventy-seven percent, but it would be on the assessed value, which is what it is now with the agreements. The assessed value typically does go down on properties that go to a pilot. But that would happen anyway if we had the agreement. So it's just something to consider. I can get a list of the school districts in the area that have opted out, if you would like, so we can look and see what they have done. And just something to think about. Look at the spreadsheets and see if you have any questions about them. See which direction you want to go.
What what's the current amount of tax we receive for the property?
So.
The uh, excuse me, the Next Amp. So that that property now, how much we're receiving versus how much we would receive even at fifty percent?
Right. So it's fifty-six thousand dollars, and I meant to put that on here. I do have it on the the New Leaf proposal on the bottom. You'll see what they're paying in taxes for anything. But on the Next Amp, we typically get around fifty-six thousand dollars. And the caveat with that is is that while they're not paying their taxes, but because we are mainhold by the county by April first every year, it's in the law. We do get our money. County is out that money too, so. So at least they're getting something.
We did say if it goes to a solar farm, the assessed value drops.
Right. Sure.
Correct. So if I read this right, we're 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 getting fifty-six thousand. Now you, the first couple of years, we've been operating on a deficit. Then I imagine the pendulum swings the other way with the value going down. And is there any reason to think that if you did accept the Next Amp proposal, then it would affect the New Leaf proposal?
I don't know. If we sign it right. If we sign it right.
Scary word that we almost talked about precedent.
Right, yeah. I know.
If it's a one-off, because I understand the environmental uh, extra work that's taken because it was a former landfill. It sounds logical. But I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to take fifty percent on every other.
Something that doesn't sound logical is the extra work for the county. And the town, just be the town. The county's taking it up their butt as well.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't have it. They're just taking it up here.
What's timeline on the new?
New Leaf is in the works right now, so I did send over the agreement to Dan for review for us as well. They are looking for us to approve that in the near future, I'd say, in the next month.
Also, we're already in receipt of that agreement. So theoretically, we could have done, we could accept these at the same, roughly the same time.
So the the way the new statute reads is, once you've agreed to negotiate, you're bound to negotiate a couple with an agreement. Otherwise, it's going to revert to litigation. If we choose not to, as Lorraine said, then you get whatever the taxable assessed value is, but you have to deal with the reassessment. Yeah, so if, in fact, they are paying, you know, it could be as much as fifty percent less, whatever you're looking at. Right now, we're getting nothing.
Yeah.
Something is better than nothing.
Yeah, the common theme.
That's why it's gonna, we think it would go down, so fifty-six thousand would go down by half.
Yeah, less than half, twenty-five cents.
It would go down less than half.
And then they increase two percent per year.
So you're, that's a lot of money, right?
There is another caveat. You told me if we do choose to opt out, if there are any uh agreements that have already been made with the utilities, they would be considered in contract for construction already, so we would have to negotiate with those agreements. And I'm not sure how we could find that out. Uh, we have to have a connection with Central Hudson and Orange Rockland to see what they have on the table there.
But when, when a company wants to do the other pilot, what's the process as far as who do they go to first, and how do they follow on?
So they go to the utilities first, and they do interconnection agreement, I believe it's called. And after that, then they reach out to the municipalities and send us their intent to enter into an agreement if we agree, and then we have to respond to that. There's been cases too where in another district I was in during COVID, we did not get the notification, and it was via email, not via mail. And we lost out on any agreement whatsoever, so.
Is there a timeline for, for response?
There is. There is. I want to say it's thirty days. I could be wrong. I have to go and check that it's thirty days, that you have to respond by, actually, six. Thank you. She does respond? So um, so if you don't, then you don't get to negotiate anything. You don't get any tax money on it at all. If you opt out, you do get the tax money on it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So just for clarity, to see directly in the board, that we don't need that.
Sorry, just have one other. So um, only that, I know, I do, that we are very involved with um our community stakeholders. Have you had conversations with the town or county uh regarding this? And just because it puts us in a little bit of a weird situation, so I don't think that they're.
So on that exam, we have reached out twice, both Slammer and myself, and we have not. With the town, not with the county. The county, as I had said back in the spring, had basically absolved itself because previously, up until the spring of twenty-three, they had been the lead negotiator behalf of all municipalities. They kept back. And then I kind of put everyone in an awkward situation, not just our district. It's going to affect the entire county, but they have a really good responses.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up. You mentioned that you could get us some information from districts that do pop out, and you want to do that. Absolutely.
And what is the timeline where you need direction for the board?
So I I think if we could have some information on the next meeting would be helpful. Next next amp, I've been very anxious to know what direction we're headed in. I think we have a little bit more leeway with with New Leaf. I think Mr. Sal would point out, if what's on the table has been ever pulled in the past, I urge the board maybe to consider just moving forward with that. Obviously, the next amp's pilot is really the one.
I feel like this New Leaf's going at the previously standard rates. I would feel pretty comfortable moving swiftly, because. Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed. I would agree with that also.
Yeah.
I I wouldn't hesitate. I agree.
Right.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm in agreement as well.
Yes. Okay.
Right, one out of two done.
So so we'll we'll have that ready for the next meeting, and I'll give us much information on the next amp.
You know, I just clarify one thing. Did I understand correctly, if a response was not received in sixty days, then you're totally off the table from being able to collect anything whatsoever?
Yeah.
Correct.
Zero.
So you either have to say you're going to opt out, or you're going to negotiate. Otherwise, you drop the red.
And we were within the sixty days of all of this.
Of responding, yes.
When is our sixty days up on the uh?
Yeah.
People want to be caught by surprise. We have sixty days on the bottom half.
Excellent.
Next, next.
We 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 we've responded to both, so we're essentially in negotiation.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Now moving on to the Assistant Superintendent for Building, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology Report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Once again, good evening, everyone. So it has been a wonderful but busy start to this whole year. Our teachers are certainly working very hard. Uh, right now, we have our Scholastic Literacy Program training here in the central office, so last week, we had the pleasure of hosting uh two, two of our lead trainers. Mrs. Lucas actually joined the team, and uh another lead trainer by the name of Clay came down. Uh, we had grades two, five, and one of our sixth-grade teams here, so they had an opportunity to really delve deeply into all the digital materials to to explore with the guidance of that leadership team, coaching team. Uh, and they also had great opportunity to get the hands on their materials for that upstart of the literacy program. Feedback that I did receive, did not have a chance to talk to every single person that was in the room. They speak to a large amount. Seems very positive, very upbeat, feeling very good about the program, excited about the program. And speaking with the two trainers, they also believe uh that there was a high level of engagement and excitement in the room, so that's always great for the rest of here. Today, we hosted grades one, four, and another sixth-grade team. They'll also have another full day tomorrow. Uh, and then as we move to Wednesday and Thursday, kindergarten, grade three, and the final grade six team will be here. Again, going through the same routine um with another trainer that we brought in. Wonderful group from Scholastic. I feel as though they do a great job of paying close attention to us, taking care of our needs. Mr. Reddiker has worked diligently to help us um modify and get those rosters set in class links so that everyone has access to the digital materials, uh, and that was no simple task. Test of that, so thank you for those efforts. I feel as though we're we're in good hands right now and moving along. As we move past Thursday, we will have some more in-person trainings in October. And then again, on November seventh, will be another training day for full-blown trainings. So we've uh we've dedicated a lot of time and resource to the trainings to get this off on the right start, but then to also build upon the knowledge that we're gaining. I like to think of it as a successful improvement. And that's where we're at right now with Scholastic. Any questions about the program or the training?
Can I just ask one?
Yeah.
Um, so after November, is all the training done, and it's up and running fully?
So those those in-person trainings with coaches would have been by contracts utilized. However, you know, they're they're just a phone call away from from some of those um maybe technical glitches that we encounter. And also, I believe we we have some virtual coaching if needed.
Okay.
So we'll we'll work through our building-level team. Um, you know, our our principals will listen closely to the teachers, and then we'll orchestrate this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So moving on to the next portion of the meeting, consent agenda. I need a motion to approve consent. On Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, board of education approves the consent agenda, chairman and all in here.
Aye.
Close. There is no old business in this meeting, so moving on to new business. I need a motion to approve events. Ashley Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendations superintendent of schools, board of education approves minutes of September four, twenty-three, and regular board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. I need a motion to appoint the assistant director of transportation. And John and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendations superintendent of schools, the board of education appoints Lucy Plaza Pope, Assistant Director of Transportation, salary of sixty-five thousand dollars prorated effective September nineteenth, twenty-three. In accordance with civil service rules, this appointment is provisional appointment effective September nineteen, twenty-twenty-three. This position is recognized under the terms and conditions of directors. Mrs. Plaza Pope is replacing Paul Lang. I believe she's here tonight, so congratulations. Need a motion to approve budgetary transfers. Bill and Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendations superintendent of schools, board of education approves budgetary transfers over twenty-five thousand dollars due to the journal entry adjustments for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to abort the RFP for legal services. Ashley Billy. Be resolved that the board of education of the Goshen Central School District hereby approves the reform for legal services with Thompson, Drolin, Waxman, Pedigro, now LOP in accordance with the district's request for proposals dated June sixteen, twenty-twenty-three. TDWPM's response dated July twelve, twenty-twenty-three, and the agreement between TDWPM and District dated September eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, on file with the district clerk. And be further resolved that the board authorized the superintendent of school to execute the agreement. All of the bearers?
Aye.
Close. I need a motion to approve extensions of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three legal tenure agreement. I have Shannon and Brett. Be resolved that the board hereby extends the terms of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year tenure agreement for legal services with the firm of Shaw, Perelson, May, and Lambert, LOP on a monthly basis for the months of July of twenty-twenty-three through September of twenty-twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. I need a motion to approve individual agreements for special education services Cornwall CSD extended school year program. I have Phil and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, board of education enters into individual agreements with Cornwall Central School District to provide special education services to Goshen Central School District students during the twenty-twenty-three extended school year program on a per-student basis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. I need a motion to appoint district data protection officer. I have John and Ashley. Be resolved, board of education appoints director for this votes as the directors as the district's data protection officer for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year in compliance with New York Education Law to date. All of the bearers?
Aye. Aye.
Close. I need a motion from the board to appoint to approve assignment assumption and consent agreement, Glen Orland Inc., Glen Hardin Inc., and the Knowles at Goshen. I have Brett and Billy. Be resolved that the board hereby authorize superintendent of schools to execute an assignment assumption and consent agreement on behalf of the district as presented to the board at this meeting for the Knowles at Goshen Inc., assigning to assume certain obligations of Glen Hardin Inc. sign or related to a payment in lieu of tax agreement dated November fifteen, nineteen ninety-four, between Glen Hardin Inc. and municipal taxing authorities, including the district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Do you have any great assignments for the board?
Hold on. It's good.
Yes, okay. Um, any further board member issues or points that anybody would like to bring up for discussion tonight?
Just ask a question. You mentioned the interest. I know that it's probably not paying a lot of money, or more than that, because I can't receive more of this. Where does that money go? Like, when we don't expect to receive it? I imagine we even budget to receive three percent of the volume we're receiving it. And what part of the budget, like, where does that land?
That's on the revenue uh report, and last year, we did collect over a million dollars more than was anticipated. This year, I did bump up that revenue code, but not to that extent because it's so hard to predict in this economy what's going to happen. So I did put some more money in that revenue from, but we we get more than that again. But it is, like you said, it's a double-edged sword because we're paying higher interest too. As a district, we're not. We'd be still paying what we paid on our bonds that we have currently, as far as any other interest payments.
Is that, I think probably better question, let's go to the general fund, let's get them.
General, sorry.
Probably a better answer.
The late general fund budget.
Great. Anything else? All right, very good. So moving on, I need a motion for the executive settlement. John, Brett. Be resolved, board of education, to accept the exception with the intent not to reconvene with the board in the meeting. Especially related to the national league to your wife, if you're a worker, and you put a certain ticket.
Aye.